All right. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act of Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice was forwarded to the Asbury Park Press and posted on the municipal bulletin board. All notices are on file with the Planning Board Secretary. Fire exits are located on the east and west sides of the council chambers as well as the rear of the building. I would ask anybody with a cellphone or other device to kindly put it on silent mode for the duration of this meeting. Just a reminder, this meeting is being recorded by AP-TV. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance.
... to the black United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Today is Monday, November 25, 2019. Councilwoman Evelyn Clayton.
Here.
Mayor John Moore. Jim Henry.
Here.
Michael Manzella.
Here.
Trudy Saifah. Jennifer Sauter.
Here.
Alexis Taylor.
Here.
Rick Lambert. Barbara Krizak.
Here. Um, the, um, there aren't any changes to the agenda, so the agenda will continue as it is. Uh, the first thing I would like to do, though, is that I'd like to make, uh, get a motion to regarding a three-minute comment session to be held during the, during this meeting?
For this.
For the Sunset Lake?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, um, the, uh, next thing we have up is the, uh, the approval of the minutes of November 18th, 2019. Any, uh, any concerns? Anybody?
I have one, uh, I have one typo on page three, and I would move to, uh, with that correction on the typo, uh, to accept the minutes.
What is the correction?
I'll give it to you later.
Oh, okay.
It's just a spelling.
It's a spelling error.
No problem.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem.
Okay.
Second.
He's motioning, Jim motioned to approve.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Okay, we have some old business to take care of, and that's 228 Main Street Realty. Come on up.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George McHill. I represent 228 Main Street LLC. We're here looking for an extension of our approvals that we received for site plan on this matter. I did submit a letter dated November 13th, 2019, outlining the reasons why we need the extension. Basically, uh, the, if you'll recall, uh, 228 is situated right next to 208. Um, we spent a lot of time looking to how to mesh these two projects together. We finally came up with it, but, um, that took a lot of time, and, uh, as we were working through it, we had sewer issues that we had to work through. We've done all that. Carolyn Fagan's here, um, tonight, uh, with me, and, uh, she worked, uh, up the sewer issues with both the city, uh, engineer and the, uh, and the boards engineer. So, um, we're ready to go on this project. We do have the, um, uh, we have the bond estimates and the, uh, and the sewer connection fees, uh, which are high, but nonetheless, that's what they are. We have them calculated. We have to submit that, uh, and then we're going to be pretty much, uh, ready to move on this application. So, under the law, we're permitted to come back and ask for a one-year extension. That's why it is a one-year extension. The statute talks about three one-year extensions, so we don't need, uh, that time, um, but, uh, we do need to extend the approvals, uh, on this, on this matter. So, that's, that's why we're here and looking for extensions.
And the extension is to what date?
It would be, uh, it would run to November, uh, 13th of next year.
2020. 2020. Um, okay, we, we see that there is a bit of activity that is going on across the street just because it is across the street.
Right.
Um, will this, will the site plan that was already approved by this board, is that what we're?
Yes.
There, that is what we're still going towards?
That's correct.
Okay. So everything is the same?
Yes.
We're just asking, because it took you some time in order to get to this design, that's why you're asking for this extension?
That's correct.
Okay.
Same thing.
So we're, everything's the same?
Right.
And you expect it to be completed by November 2020?
Well, yeah, probably. Maybe, you know.
I have a question, and, uh, are we really, are we talking about the property that is on the corner of Madison and, uh, Main, or have we talked? Uh, that is going to be built the way it was approved?
Yes. Yep. And we do have another project that ties into that, uh, but that hasn't been reviewed by the board yet.
All right. Anybody else have any questions? No? All right. Motion to approve? Oh, sorry.
I just had a question. Has the zoning changed since you got approved?
No.
Anything else? Nope. All right. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Evelyn Clayton.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Michael Manzella.
Yes.
Jennifer Sauter.
Yes.
Alexis Taylor.
Yes.
And Barbara Krizak.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Can we just make a note that we are, one of our professionals will now be leaving? Doug from Insight will be gone. Thank you for coming.
Good seeing you.
Good seeing you. Sunset Lake Commission, please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Jason Harzold from TANM Associates City Engineers Office. Uh, we're here tonight to present to the board the Sunset Lake Master Plan. Uh, I do have two versions of this presentation. One is a somewhat abridged version that we, uh, put together, uh, that is not quite as lengthy as the full master plan document that I believe you all have. It's your preference, Madam Chair, if you'd like to go through the entire Sunset Lake Master Plan document, or if you'd like to, uh, just hit on the highlights.
I'm sure that we could probably go to the, um, the, the full plan if we need to. If people have questions, if they want more detail, I see no reason why we couldn't go to it at another time, you know, during the process since you have it anyway. Uh, but I think that going through the abridged version would probably be fine.
If I may interrupt for one second.
Sure.
But can we just put on record that all notices have been, um, sent, uh, Mr. Zerfico and Mr. Beekman have looked over them. Um, they are sufficient, and if we can enter into the record on behalf of the board.
Yep. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. All right. So, uh, the genesis of this master plan began early this year with the Sunset Lake Commission petitioning the city to, uh, develop an overall master plan document for the, oh, let's do that. An overall master plan document, uh, to pull together a, a plan and a vision for Sunset Lake Park. Uh, we had a series of meetings, uh, with city officials and, uh, and stakeholders, and subsequent meeting with, uh, the Sunset Lake Commission, at which time, uh, the public was invited in to provide comments, and we assembled, uh, all the comments, incorporated them into all the different elements you're about to see in the master plan, and subsequently submitted, uh, our final document to the, uh, commission and to the city. Uh, so, with that said, we'll just run through, uh, the plan itself. The overarching opinion and concern voiced by, by the general public, uh, and all of the stakeholders involved were, uh, the overall water quality and, uh, condition of the park in its existing condition. Uh, there's, there currently exists, uh, very shallow conditions in the lake and, uh, an overabundance of wildlife, predominantly geese, uh, that tend to, uh, tend to degrade the water quality of the lake itself. So as we go through the different elements of the plan, uh, the main focus appear to be, and, and as we, uh, outline in the report, uh, water quality is of paramount importance.
Before you, before you continue, there are some red dots and yellow circles?
Right.
What do they mean?
So in the existing condition, what we have is all of the surrounding neighborhoods, uh, the, the stormwater runoff from the roads to surrounding neighborhoods discharged at all of these, uh, points or in and around the lake. Uh, there currently exists, you'll see a, a yellow circle in the lower right corner. That is a water quality device that's already installed to separate floatables and, and other debris from entering the lake. When we get down the road of our suggestions and improvements, uh, we, we are proposing, uh, somewhere down the line to install additional, uh, stormwater management and, and, uh, polluted So we, we took an approach based on all the input from the stakeholders and the public of a cohesive theme, uh, beginning at the Main Street entrance and progressing eastward towards Convention Hall. The approach was, uh, designed such that it would not generally change the historic feeling and elements of the park, rather that they would enhance and perhaps bring the park somewhat back to its original conceptual design and theme. So we began with, uh, the area bounded by Main Street, Bond Street to the east, Sunset Avenue to the north, and Fifth Avenue to the south, and we called that area the Square. Currently, uh, it is comprised of mainly lawn area with dilapidated asphalt pathways. Uh, we're proposing to enhance the, the gateways, the entrances to the park, six of them, to be exact, one on each quarter, one fronting Main Street and one fronting Bond Street to provide a, uh, a linear path as a gateway to the remainder of the park. So there are corner park entrances, uh, all quarters of square, uh, and it, it once again provides, uh, a cohesive pathway to the remainder of the park. There are also, uh, there's also a proposed, uh, entry gateway on Fifth Avenue, uh, closer to the, uh, Sunset, the current Sunset Lake Bridge, uh, which is also a designated entry In that same square park area, and as we, as we progress into the park, um, we, we designated the, uh, the southwest corner of the lake area that has, we're calling it the Grove. Uh, in those two areas, the tree canopy is proposing, we're proposing it to be cut back and thinned a little bit to promote more sunlight entry. The, uh, the ground surface is somewhat damp and wet. It's not a very good, uh, doesn't promote lawn growth, uh, doesn't promote the drying out of the, the area to be used. Uh, so we're proposing to cut back the tree canopy to allow more light in, uh, and that will happen at the Square and the Grove area. So in that same Grove area, and if I take a step back, the numbers you see in the upper left-hand quarter correspond to the areas on the map itself where those same corresponding numbers, uh, are indicated. So you can see this is Plaza, this is number three Plaza. Uh, we're proposing a central plaza in the Square and also a central plaza just adjacent to the current Sunset Lake Pedestrian Footbridge. Those plazas can consist of any number of things, hardscape, uh, fountains, artwork, uh, and that's all to be determined, you know, down the road. This is quite simply a master plan document. Another overarching theme, uh, as described by users of the park, the public, uh, and the, uh, city council and, and the other stakeholders, was that the, in the current configuration, there is no sidewalk or pathway around the entire, uh, around the entire length of the park. So, with this plan, we're proposing a continuous pathway, continuous pedestrian pathway around the whole square, around the entire, uh, Sunset Lake West, through the Grove area to the central, uh, central area by the footbridge. We'll get into St. John's Island, uh, in the, in the next few slides, but also connecting the entire rug, uh, surrounding the whole park. Those pathways can consist of, uh, concrete, pavers, uh, any number of, of materials. We're also proposing a pedestrian crossing mid-block of Bond Street between Fifth and Sunset, almost, uh, almost like a transition between the, uh, the square park area and the Grove area. Provides a continuous path, uh, and it also, uh, lends itself to the interconnectivity of all of the elements. In the Grove area, uh, we are proposing, uh, additional seating, uh, nooks, if you will, uh, areas that, that can be used for passive recreation, uh, reading, sitting. As we go through this, you'll notice that, uh, in no instance are we providing or promoting active recreation. So there's no playgrounds, there's no, uh, sports field areas, um, its, its general use is intended to be passive recreation. Once again, these are all different, uh, forms of seating, uh, different elements that are incorporated into the landscape, uh, many of them intending to be natural tight materials that, uh, kind of fit in with a, a Grove kind of wood, semi-wooded atmosphere. So in many historical photographs, uh, we picked up that there was at one time a pedestrian footbridge crossing across to St. John's Island. Uh, currently, St. John's Island, uh, the only access to it is either by boat or coming off of Grand Avenue, uh, a, uh, a set of concrete steps coming down off the Grand Avenue. There's absolutely no consideration given for ADA access. So if it's, if it's, uh, determined ADA access, ADA access is a priority. Uh, there are two ways we can get that done. One is a, a secondary footbridge from the main part of the, uh, the Grove area, or, uh, there's another access point, uh, closer to Grand Avenue that we'll get to, uh, in a, in a subsequent slide, uh, subsequent slide. Uh, so, number eight, this, this plays at the St. John's Island. Uh, at one point, uh, there's evidence of a, uh, a central gathering space on St. John's Island. It's currently, uh, what I would classify as ruins at this point. Um, but we're proposing some form of, uh, trellis work that can either be, uh, adorned with live vegetation, or, uh, we're just an open trellis to provide, uh, con, uh, more concentrated gathering space, uh, and also provide shape. So the alternate access to, to St. John's Island, uh, there is, if we have to take a little, little bit of a closer look at this, there is adequate room to provide an ADA accessible route, uh, in a linear fashion along the bridge and down to, uh, where the current walkover bridge is, uh, to the island with a very small, uh, pre-frapicated, uh, placed footbridge. Okay. There are many, many designs of pre-fab footbridges that can be provided. So along the northern shore, uh, of the lake, uh, in the existing condition, there currently is no walkway along Sunset Avenue. There's no sidewalk path there now, and the space between the shoreline of the lake and the curb line is very minimal. Uh, it, it likely would not support a six-foot wide walking path. So in this area, what we're proposing is a boardwalk-style promenade, which will serve two purposes. The first purpose, it will allow for that walking path to be continuous, and it'll also allow a passive recreation area to view the lake. Fishermen, um, can utilize it. Uh, we understand there's a, uh, a large population of residents who do like to use this lake for fishing. Uh, the existing footbridge, uh, the city recently, over the last, I believe it was two years ago, uh, replaced the, uh, existing area across the lake due to damage from hurricane Sandy. Uh, however, in, uh, historical photos, as you can see, uh, that bridge was, was adorned with, with plantings and flowers, uh, and garden-type spaces. Uh, so in and around the, uh, central plaza, uh, which you can see as number three here, uh, we're proposing some enhanced, uh, some enhanced landscaping planners, uh, which is, which would link, uh, some of the elements from the square to the Grove and into the As a water circulation feature, in order to keep algae growth down, fountains, normally water, water agitators, uh, are used to promote, uh, oxygenation and to decrease the, uh, the amount of algae growth. Along with dredging of the lake, which was proposed, which we proposed, uh, way back in item number one, uh, we would propose a series of spray fountains. There are, uh, manufacturers who make these spray fountains that are programmable. Uh, they are lit, uh, they can be synchronized, they can do all kinds of, of light shows and water shows. They're actually pretty neat. So getting back to the, uh, water quality issues, uh, we found it's improved in that installing what are called living shorelines tend to reduce, uh, the, the goose population due to the fact that geese tend to like a clear access path from the, the lawn grazing areas into the water. So if you can provide a living shoreline, uh, it'll not only, uh, help to, uh, enhance the, the, uh, water quality of the lake, but it'll also prevent wildlife from entering into the lake. The, the final goal being that if we're not providing an environment that the geese like, they won't show up. So as you all know, there's a, uh, an existing Veterans Memorial Plaza. Uh, it was strongly recommended, uh, that the design intent of the original plaza be maintained. So what we're doing here is we're providing connectivity with pathways and enhancing the overall aesthetic, uh, of that plaza. No material changes in, uh, the original design because it's our understanding that was somewhat well thought out and, uh, and, uh, planned once it's first constructed. So there currently exists on the, on the very eastern, uh, portion of the lake, uh, a single biofiltration, we'll call it a biofiltration swale, uh, that allows overflow rainwater from the roadway to filter through the grass and enter the lake. We're proposing to enhance that feature, uh, number 15, to allow, uh, biofiltration areas, essentially, uh, rain gardens that'll take this stormwater runoff, filter it naturally, and allow it to flow, uh, into the lake rather than directly piped. So these are some, some theme photos of what we envision, uh, the, the square area to look like, much like a, a square city park that you would see in either Philadelphia or, uh, Manhattan. The area obviously between Sunset Lake and Bond Street, uh, or, I'm sorry, between Bond Street and Grand Avenue would encompass the Grove area, uh, St. John's Island, uh, the promenade on the northern side, and that living shoreline all the way around the, the western portion of the lake and continuing all the way around St. John's Island. And then this is a, just a blown-up view of the eastern portion of the lake with the, uh, the, the same walking path continuously all the way around, the bio retention swales at the very eastern side, and, uh, incorporating the improvements to the Veterans Memorial as well as the, uh, the area of fountains. So that was our, our presentation to council and the Sunset Lake Commission. Uh, I will also bring up the final master plan. So a reference if you have any questions.
Can I ask a few questions?
Sure.
In no particular order. Sorry, just to organize myself, um, these are not in any particular order. Um, and thank you, because I was going through that condensed presentation, it clarified a few things for me already, um, and I'm really happy to see this happening for Sunset Lake.
Yeah.
Uh, so my first question, I'm guessing it wasn't part of the scope, um, but was there any discussion about an interpretive signage program? I saw...
There was a, there was a little bit of discussion about a signage program discouraging, uh, residents and users of the park from feeding the wildlife. Uh, there was also a few elements of, uh, wayfinding signage, uh, that would ultimately be incorporated into the wayfinding... that would ultimately be incorporated into the wayfinding program all throughout citywide, which would direct people to the park.
So I saw, and I was assuming it probably wasn't part of the scope or didn't come up, but I was hoping to see at some point that there could be interpretive signage, particularly in this park, but about the history of the park and the natural history, the ecology, all of that. At some, even though it wouldn't have been in-depth at this level, but just a mention of it because it's a real opportunity and we have so much historic material about that park.
Sure.
So that was one question. And then also related is that at those corner plazas, the entry areas on the corners, that seemed like another area where there's an opportunity for interpretive elements. Or not just signage, but like interpretive elements. So I saw public art mentioned, but just, and again, I realize it wouldn't be at this level of concept, but that it's a real opportunity, especially right there because it's such a prominent area.
I think much of what you're mentioning is at least mentioned in the document itself, in the full document itself.
Yeah, I did, I did read the full document, but yeah, there's definitely mention. I just want to make sure that it's not sort of lost in there because it's a real opportunity, I think, for that park and throughout the city. Then, so now totally switching gears, the spray fountains, and this I didn't look in detail, but there, was there a discussion over them being solar-powered spray fountains?
There was not discussion of that in the document. It certainly can be included.
Because it seemed like that's, I mean, now they're so commonly available that that would help. Because I was concerned about the energy use in general. I think it's a really nice, sort of fun thing to have that option in there, to have spray fountains. So then I noticed in the full report, actually just flip by it, but the green building and infrastructure techniques listed a whole, you know, host of water management systems and other things. And then in the actual plan, I saw the enhanced bioinfiltration and the living shoreline. And then the other, those items are there basically as suggestions that could be incorporated at certain areas, but they're not designated as.
Well, there's a few areas where obviously the living shoreline is designated almost throughout the entire shoreline of the park. The biofiltration areas at the easternmost corners, but they can certainly be incorporated anywhere within the park.
And that's what I was hoping, and I don't know the exact process is how this plays out, you know, as it goes forward because it's, I know it's the plan, but that there'd be, that there's probably other opportunities. And that's why I was happy to see all those. And then I was just thinking that how would we, for example, the enhanced bioinfiltration is a great example because it's already kind of there, then your enhancement is going to function. There's probably other smaller-scale systems that could fit in other areas. So I'm just hoping that they do end up getting built. And then a small thing from the fishing, the boardwalk pier area where for fishing and getting access to the water, another detailed thing, but it would be great if we can incorporate some of those elements that facilitate fishing, that you see in a lot of places where there is fishing, so that it's sort of preempting issues of like either waste or just making it easier to fish. Because if we're going to say it's for fishing, we may as well, you know, have these--
Right, go all out.
Right. And knowing that people will probably do it anyway, whether or not. And that's it. Thank you for letting me go before I forgot.
Well, obviously, this is a master plan, it's a living document, it can be amended and supplemented.
Got a couple of questions concerning the pathways that you are proposing. I think one of the comments or one of the indications here is going to be crushed stone?
It can be. That's one option. It can be crushed stone. That would obviously limit the amount of impervious coverage. Because you add that much sidewalk, you're adding a lot of impervious coverage. Crushed stone, pavers could be used.
Could, would you consider using a sandstone aggregate? So you would have something that's reasonably hard-packed?
Sure. Almost like a dense-grated aggregate or recycled concrete material?
Well, the problem with that type of stuff is that generally it doesn't key too well and that somebody on a bicycle or somebody pushing a straw is going to have a little problem. Sometimes the soil itself is a better, a better pathway.
It's better base.
Yeah. And I assume also when you're considering that, you're concerned removing the asphalt paths that are--
All the existing cracked asphalt paths that are in disrepair, they're in rough shape.
Along the south side of the lake between Bond and Grand, there appears to be a set of stairs. Maybe it's just a, maybe it's just a stepped bulkhead.
I think it's, I think it's a stepped bulkhead. I don't recall seeing, because I've walked in many times. I'm an Asbury resident, so I'm here all the time. I don't recall seeing it, but I will certainly look into it. But I believe it is a stepped bulkhead. The existing bulkheads that are still present, it's a mishmash of timber, granite block, concrete block.
Broken sidewalk.
Broken sidewalk, yeah.
Yeah, it stopped the erosion. But along that, as I say, along that stretch, it may be the stepped bulkhead. You would think it'd go a long way to remove all the vegetation from that. There's a lot of vegetation growing into it. Other than that, it looks like it's in pretty decent shape. It might be worth trying to save. And another comment, you mentioned the possibility of lighting and you questioned whether or not because of various zones, the lighting could be uniform throughout. I think that's a given, it must be.
Yeah, it would make, it would make little sense to have incohesive light fixtures from zone to zone. But there is some element, and we noted in the site lighting portion, that the waterfront redevelopment area carries its own lighting requirements as you get into the Bradley Square and Atlantic Square areas.
Well, now that you bring it up, I'd just like to point out to you that there is a discrepancy in the waterfront, between the waterfront redevelopment plan and the court-approved rehabilitation zone. And that would affect, or potentially affect the lighting standards. So that's something that needs to be reviewed and resolved.
We'll certainly look into that. We did our best to, to attempt to coordinate this master plan with the waterfront redevelopment plan, noticing that there were discrepancies. But obviously, any, you know, any project that is proposed to be built when it goes into that phase, we naturally have to adhere to any requirements or recommendations.
Have you said any priorities as to, for the development? I mean, I noticed you've given a whole bunch of--
Yeah, we've given a whole, a whole bunch of options. I think the general consensus is that dredging and water quality would be first on the list. I've heard a few things here and there about the potential for the waterfront redevelopers to contribute to that effort. I'm not sure where that has gone.
Well, you would think that might be in their best interest, especially the Asbury, to contribute to the overall water quality of the lake. And just another comment concerning the aerators that you're talking about. Because of the shallowness of the lake, the, they were having problems with horizontal pumps. They had to go to a vertical, I'm sorry, a vertical pump.
They had to go to the horizontal. Yeah, I think we make mention of that in the main document, that the depth of the lake will certainly contribute to the effectiveness of those aerators and their operation, obviously.
Can I ask a few questions about, I'm going to start with water quality and then treat landscape as a second piece of that. But, so I kind of agree, I guess you were saying that in your public outreach that water quality was of top concern. And I think that what we've seen is probably only going to get worse just with algal blooms. The heat, I mean, the indication is everywhere in New Jersey is getting worse with algal blooms. Will, what would be the effectiveness in dredging in that case? Do you think dredging would be--
Dredging directly impacts algal blooms. So the depth of the water, or I should say, the shallowness of the water leads to temperature increase, which promotes the bloom. So the deeper we can dredge, adding that depth will add the ability of fish to take hold and provide cooler temperatures to lessen the effect of algae growth.
And do you have a sense what the kind of historical bottom of the channel was? Was it to a greater depth with the--
I don't off the top of my head. I think I recall somewhere between the four- to six-foot depth range. Right now, there's parts of the lake that are less than a foot, two feet.
And then I'd just say anything that you can do in order to control runoff into the lake, that's going to be your first line of defense, right? So all the points that you push, like the red areas where those--
All those points of discharge are essentially direct connections to the infrastructure, to the roadway infrastructure.
Right.
So anything we can do to disconnect those--
Yeah.
Or to drop in water treatment devices in those lines will go a long way to help the lake.
And not to mention just public education, like I know you promoted some signage about, you know, don't feed the geese. I think, like unlike roadway signage, we could actually get more inventive in terms of how we're communicating to the public. And I would love to see, you know, you're not required to have a standard "don't feed the geese" sign. And I think it would be a lot more effective and catch people's attention. If you, we have a very creative population here. If you were to come up with some more creative signs that would kind of make people laugh, but also realize that like, no, there is a-- Like I think, I like that you were trying to keep, connect it back to the ecosystem, but the arrows of what, why feeding the geese were a problem didn't really do anything for me in terms of understanding it. And I think that you could have like a great signage campaign about both not feeding the wildlife, understanding water quality, helping with runoff, like everything else. So I think you could see something more inventive there.
Throw it in there too, and that ties in, when I was talking about the interpretive signage, that ecological side was like--
Yeah.
I mean, there could be a theme through on both, the entire one together, but it doesn't have to just be signage that, and I think there's opportunities throughout to get to those points as well, but without hitting everyone over the head with it.
Yeah. And then I always say this, but involve the youth in making signs and understanding it. And the other way that I think, like, you know, in terms of water quality and water testing, there are a lot of innovative things happening in like, you know, Guanist or Bronx River where they involve like the local high school and testing water quality. And I think that's something that could be, like go a long way towards understanding what the various health of Sunset Lake is at various times and help with people understanding it too. That was just my water quality. Oh, and take out all the bulkheads, just take them out, just put in-- I mean, there's no purpose in having bulkheads. They don't do anything. You would be much better off having a buffer around, a beautiful natural buffer around this. But that wasn't a question.
You mentioned something about landscaping.
I'll get back, I'll have other people talk, I can get back to this.
I just had a question about the boardwalk on the south side of Sunset Lake. Is that south? No, I'm sorry, north, north side. Is it, I see, well, the illustration that it's elevated. And part of the issue on that part of the street is there's a sidewalk and folks are, who are getting out of their car, have to walk in the street or on the grass. So is it going to have easy access from the street?
Right. Well, what happens, as you noted, what happens now would be people park in that area, they open their door, they step out onto the grass. That area does have a pretty significant slowdown. The boardwalk itself would be at grade, at grade level. So it would be elevated over the water, but when you got back out to the curb line, it would be level with the curb line. So as you, as you have the walking paths connected to it, they would all be at the same elevation all the way around the lake. It's pretty much the same elevation all the way around.
And I think the design is great. It would encourage use, it'll encourage people to use the park because from what I can see, the park is very underutilized today. And this will make it more user-friendly. And I think especially people who live around the park will love it.
Well, I only have one question. What was the final discussion in terms of boat access, kayak launch? Was that something that the team felt wasn't--
I think, I think the general consensus was don't include it.
Okay.
So I know we don't mention it in the document itself.
Okay, then, then no. Gotcha.
All right, there's something that I saw on number five, the new pedestrian crossing. Was that, that was the proposal that we would have something through the whole length of Bond? Is that, or is that just the crossing itself, just the crossing? Okay.
It looks like a mid-block crosswalk.
All right, mid-block.
Yeah.
Okay.
Raised, elevated, kind of plateau-style crosswalks so that you don't have, because Bond Street's going to, it's one-way and it's obviously, it's going to remain open as a through street. I mean, unless it merits closure and vacation, which is always an option. But it's intended to be a raised plateau-style crosswalk.
So the intent on Bond itself, because a lot of people park there. And, I mean, if we have people that are starting to use this actively, I mean, that's a great place for them to park. But I'm just concerned that there's, you know, traffic, vehicular traffic, so.
If we do have a crosswalk on Bond that size and that much anticipated utilization, it would likely warrant some form of flashing crosswalk beacon.
Or it slows people down, at least because it's raised.
Speed deterrence.
Okay.
Yeah, it, raised crosswalks technically act as traffic common devices, like they slow people down.
And also tie a couple of two sides together.
Yeah.
Right, that would be. I know that you'd also mentioned on number six, something about, well, did you mention there would be playgrounds or no playgrounds?
No playgrounds.
No playgrounds. Okay.
All passive, it would all be passive fixtures.
There was, and I'm looking at the, the actual master plan having to do with Sunset Lake. And what I haven't seen, and maybe it is in the larger version, I haven't seen anything about bike racks, benches, garbage, recycling. I haven't seen anything, is that in the larger plan?
We mentioned it.
Because if we have picnic tables, which it sounds like we have, there should be some garbage cans.
Yeah, I think the general, the general idea or the proposal that we heard most was that everybody would like to see this park as a carry-in, carry-out type scenario where we don't have all of the blue steel garbage cans. where we don't have all of the blue steel garbage cans littered around, in and around the park. So as you bring your garbage in, you carry it out as well.
Yeah. You're going to-
But like I said, it's a living document that certainly can be amended.
Well, I can see not providing dumpsters.
Or blue garbage cans, but I can see doing the black garbage cans.
Yeah, you need something for, so people just drop trash, they don't drop it on the ground.
Well, I think the same-
It would certainly take that into consideration.
Because there is a section on, not really the garbage, but the, this part that talks about seating, and there's a few sections in the full document that talk about site furniture, and it gives, I think you'd use themed photos or photo, giving an idea of the type of materials. But I don't see if there, there's not sort of a vocabulary for site furniture in this, yet. And so there's two things that I was thinking, again, back to the, yeah, the mention of art and the mention of this, because, again, it's sort of this, I imagine from the, I wasn't at the community meetings, I wish I was, but that there's a desire to kind of maintain that character of the park, but at the same time allow for some creativity in different areas. So I think if there were a palette of materials or just a little bit more guidance about material selection or something, then, set a framework, so if there is, you know, a designated area to do some art or whatever it is, then it's, it ties out, it ties. So you can have variation, but there's a theme. I mean, there's some sort of vocabulary in terms of material, and it's kind of there, it's kind of in there, but I'm afraid it still could be a lot of mix and match, depending on how it played out over the years.
This may be a question for our planner. What is, this may be, and-
I better-
Yeah.
You better be sworn in.
Have you, has he been sworn in?
Not yet.
Not tested.
Okay, that's good. Okay, what is the, what is the function of the master plan? Because my understanding is that there would be further kind of landscape design, like, this is very, very general in terms of pathway, like, this isn't implementable except as a concept. Wouldn't there be further?
Well, I'm sort of late to the party in this, I hadn't been to any meetings, I wasn't involved with it. It really takes on whatever form that the governing body wants it to take on. They wanted this to serve as the platform by which construction documents and design development is built, then that's what it is. It's a concept plan for this that evolves through DD and to that. So it takes on whatever role that the governing body decides it takes.
And so, but unlike, obviously, a municipal master plan, this isn't a, like, legally determinative or required, it just ends up being, what, a vision document?
Well, so here's, here's, here's how this could work. In your master plan, you do have, you discuss land use, you discuss open space, you discuss sustainability, things like that. Something like this, which isn't really part of the master plan, if you wanted to give it that sort of strength, you could consider this an amendment to the master plan as an appendix to the master plan. The statute allows you to include studies and other information that informs the other aspects of that. So if you felt like you wanted to give this a real, the imprimatur of being within the master plan, it would go in as an appendix that would inform other aspects of it, which could inform storm work, which is part of your master plan, it could inform open spacing, or things like that. It doesn't have to.
Yeah. Well, I guess, we don't have anyone from the Sunset Lake Commission here, but is that the, is that the intent?
Out there.
May I ask of the, may I ask if that's the intent?
What's it?
Is it the intent that this would be, become a kind of addendum or appendancy to the overall master plan?
Yes, that would be-
Okay, understood. That's helpful.
Okay, on the, may I, may I just see that if you don't mind, just the first page? What I'm looking at is that what was given to us by the council, and they are asking, they're asking, the mayor and city council are requesting that the planning board incorporate the plan as an element of the master plan. That is what the statement says in this resolution.
Well, so the difference is, this is not an element of the master plan, but it could be an appendix to the master plan that would inform the other elements.
Well, we do have, clearly, there is a section in the master plan about open space, lakes, parks, and recreation, and that's where this would really just fall in place and be a guide, very much like the master plan. And, I mean, that's the way, that's the way that I pretty much see how this goes. Does anyone else have any other comments before we go to the public about this plan? Just a suggestion.
I'm just, go ahead. I know there's probably another, because it's the first time that I've been part of the planning board when a sub-plan has come up, an element like this, not an element, an appendix. But I'm just going to reiterate again that the, having an interpretive, a section or some reference to interpretive elements, I think, to not have that in there is a missed opportunity.
So what we did with the, because the last sub-element that we passed was the plan for bike, walking and biking back in April. We, the board made some certain formal recommendations, and after the plan was adopted, a front page was added, like, right behind the cover, that said, "This plan was adopted by the board on X date, and here are the formal recommendations of the board to be included with this plan element." So that's kind of what I was thinking we would do.
But is that something that we could, is it just based on our recommendations tonight, or we could work on what that?
No, it would be on the recommendations from tonight.
Okay.
It would be from the recommendations from tonight. And after we hear from the comments from the public, or comments from, pretty much comments from the public, and comments from our professionals and the board, we can put something in front of this. Professionals, any questions, any comments? Okay. Motion to open public comment?
So moved.
Second.
Sorry.
Great.
Aye.
Come on up. We got three minutes. Anyone, please? Come on up. So it's in form of a comment, you can go back there, or you can come here, whatever you like.
I'm Wendy Glassman.
Come on.
Yeah.
You gotta go to a microphone, one of them has got to be a microphone.
Hi, Wendy Glassman, president of the Sunset Lake Park Conservancy. I live at 703 Sunset Avenue. Sorry, I came back from the dentist, so I can't really talk that well, but I encourage you to approve the plan that's being presented to you. There was a lot of thought that went into this, a lot of discussion. The Conservancy worked on it with the commission, with the public. Some of the things that you've recommended make a lot of sense. Thank you, Jen. We've talked about the kinds of things, the garbage cans, you know, the benches, that we need your uniformity. We have an opportunity to make a really beautiful, beautiful vision from an already beautiful park. So this is, it's a large wish list, but it gives an overarching idea of the kind of park that we want, and how we want it to be used, and how the community wants it to be used, so I encourage you to adopt it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Come on up. Either microphone is fine, whatever works for you.
Hey, we're back on a wired mic, great. Hi, Warner Baumgartner, city historian. It's very ambitious. It's actually, in my opinion, a bit too much. Sometimes less is more. I'm a believer in classical-type urban development, especially in historic areas such as Asbury Park, so that's where my comments are grounded in. First of all, the notion of gateways on the corners, that's a very modern gimmicky construct. There are no gateways in Asbury Park. There were designated path entrances which were delineated by vegetation. There were never any hardscape-type gateways. It's really unnecessary, unless you plan to put a fence around that entire western area, gateways make no sense. People are going to walk into there wherever they want to walk into. So that's a gimmick that's really unnecessary, and it would really be more traditional to just have nice planted corners with the paths going through, with shrubbery or flowers or whatever. So you should lose the gateways. As far as naming conventions of calling these areas out in new names, there's no historical basis for these areas being called what they are, you know, the square, the grove, the plateau, or whatever. So I would certainly caution against renaming parts of the park. There's no historical basis for that. I really like the idea of no sports, no playgrounds, no active recreation. That's terrific. I think active-type activities for children would be appropriate, like, you know, some places have those concrete or steel caricatures that kids could climb on or something, something interpretive, which was mentioned from some of the board members. That would be fun to have, but I definitely appreciate not having active recreation. Years ago, basketball courts were recommended here, which would be a total disaster. The bridge to the island, another winner. That's a historical element that's been removed, that needs to be put back. The bridge over to St. John's makes it accessible and completes the path of travel, essentially. St. John's Island is a whole topic in it of itself. That was a works project, a WPA project, basically, and there are ample postcards that describe the design of that. There should be every effort made to restore St. John's Island to the WPA design, instead of this loosely-defined kind of idea that's demonstrated here in this recommendation. That would give much more credibility to the plan as being preservation-minded. The boardwalk on Sunset Avenue, oh, may I continue? As a courtesy?
Yes.
Thank you. The boardwalk on Sunset Avenue, while in concept, it seems to make a lot of sense. I question its validity as a fishing area. I've lived on the lake for 40 years, and there's no sport fishing going on there. There's kids throwing a line in and pulling sunnies out, or an occasional catfish. So to hold this out as being like a fishing area is a little bit disingenuous. As a boardwalk to hang out and look at the lake, you know, maybe catch a few sunnies or something, that's great. But unless somebody has actually done a study of any sport fish that might be in here, I think you really shouldn't promote this as like a fishing lake. Go to Dea Lake, that's where the fish are. The fountains, the animated fountains, I think that came out of one of my comments, in that there is a, an abandoned animated fountain. It is, in fact, part of the Veterans Memorial, which brings me to the Veterans Memorial. I like the comments about preserving it. It's already been remodeled from its original design, so really, that doesn't hold much water. What I'd like to see is it not be intruded upon any further. And unfortunately, in the last few years, or actually this year, there's been major additions added to that memorial by way of flower gardens that are inappropriate and things of that nature. I think you really need to get back to the roots, back to the basics of, it's a war memorial, a somber place that includes the fountain and includes the entire vista of that area. It's not just the flagpole with a couple of plaques and a little con- The design concept was the entire vista of the arc of cherry trees on that peninsula with the fountain in the distance doing its animated effects. So that, that concept of what the memorial actually is needs to be expanded to what it really is in the historical context. The paths through the western part, the square, as it's called, there's no need for them to be curvilinear. Everything at Asbury is on a rectilinear grid, aside from the banks of some of the lakes. But if you look to the right, you'll see straight crosswalks, corner to corner. That's how people move. People walk in straight lines. To change the western end to these S-curves is really unnecessary. To have straight paths through there makes a lot more sense, it's more historically accurate and authentic, and again, lose the gateways also. Fishing I mentioned, lighting. Lighting is going to be a disaster. I can tell already about what's going on in town currently. Could you bring up the slide that had the lighting on there? I'll just point out what the greatest detriment to bad lighting is, and it's right there, that very top picture. I see one, two, three, four, four bright white globes. That is really horrible lighting. That's bad lighting by its definition. The one in the lower left is probably the best of the three, which are the bollards that light up the pathway. So you're going to have to really take great care in any lighting that goes in here to as not create glare and an environmental problem with excess lighting where it's not needed. I still have not heard anything about where the water comes from. Everyone talks about the water quality, and I've mentioned at the prior meetings, the water is an aquifer. This is, this is an aquifer-fed lake, and the source is right around where the existing fountain is. And what I've asked multiple times is, has anybody actually taken water samples from the natural spring to determine the quality of the water? To get a baseline to determine what's actually going on with this algae blooming, you know? I can't imagine that it's trash running into the lake that causes the algae blooms. The shallowness was testified, too, that might be a cause, I'm not an expert in that. But I think to get a baseline of the source of the water is extremely important before you talk about water quality.
Right. That would be something that, in my personal opinion, and our professionals can certainly attest to that, and the Sunset Lake Commission can also attest to this, is that that kind of discussion, having to do with water sampling of those specific places? I would think, well, I mean, that they would come to you, to the commission, and request, and make those suggestions.
That would be great, but I think-
You know, that would be the suggestion.
I don't know if it's mentioned in the plan, I think that specific, that specificity should be in the plan, is what I'm suggesting. And finally, the crosswalk on Bond, completely, completely unneeded. I mean, that's kind of silly to have a crosswalk on Bond Street with flashing pedestrian lights. People are going to cross Bond wherever they want to cross, they're going to walk from one side of the park to the other. Again, as I said, unless you, unless you fence this completely off and only have designated pathways where people can ingress and egress, people are going to walk where they want to walk. That's a, that's a complete waste of time to put a dedicated crosswalk there. Certainly, the path may cross over, but with flashing pedestrian lights and things, I think you're getting way out of hand. So in general, the lake does need something, but it doesn't need all of this. It needs to get back to its roots, its historic roots, its design roots of Asbury Park, what's important, and identifying and preserving those things that are vestiges of Asbury Park's history, St. John's Island, the WPA, the Veterans Monument, which is bigger than what everyone thinks it is, it's that entire vista around that peninsula. And, you know, keep things simple, keep it simple, and I think you'll get more bang for the buck.
Thank you. Anyone else? Comments?
So I can get 12 minutes, right?
No, you can get three, please.
This place is funny. Really, you're serious about that?
Do you have a comment?
No, my comment is, I'm asking you. You gave somebody 12 minutes and you denied me anything.
Here's, I can certainly, I can certainly explain. I can explain.
No, it's your meeting. No, I understand from last week, it's your meeting. And I feel you dull it out very unfairly, but I just want that on the record for everybody listening, because you run it the way you want, but I'm a homeowner taxpayer here, I don't feel it's fair, and I have a right to say that, it's my comment.
Okay.
I'm not out of order, am I, Council? Waiting for the slam of his hammer, Dan.
Time's ticking.
Excuse me?
Your time is ticking.
You don't think I know that? What's wrong with the clock? How much time do I have left?
Two minutes, 51 seconds.
Two minutes, 51 seconds. Okay. I'm looking at some articles when you formed the commission here, I think in 2017, I think the names prominent most are Glassman and Chapman. I think Glassman described it as a place where we can have boating and skating and even a boat regatta. Where did that go? I'm also hearing comments that, gee, we don't want fishermen. Look, I moved here for fishing, you have three nice lakes, we all like to fish here. I mean, I hear comments that there's no fishermen. Why is there no fishermen? Why is there no fishermen? Because a lot of fishermen are afraid to come here and fish, especially at night, because of all the crime. Now, a lot of us pay, I don't have to pay anymore, I'm over 70 now, but I always kept up my freshwater license for the Deal Lake, the Sunset Lake, and Wesley Lake. However, it's in the community. No one wants to go near any of these lakes. They're so polluted, so dangerous, that no one comes here anymore. Now, it seems like you want to turn it into something that's gonna be some attraction thing. Well, it's probably gonna be used by Asbury Hotel for their guests, because it's right on their doorstep. And then, in the, one of the things that I saw in the formation here with the commission, it stated that, oh, and we want to bring back all the jazz festivals and... So here's how things always start in Asbury. They start by having meetings with, well, you send out all the 200-foot notices, right? Who's here? Nobody. The apathy is unbelievable. You know how important Deal Lake, Sunset Lake, and Wesley Lake are to us? And yet, there's nobody here. There's nobody here. To, first of all, I think the whole plan should be scrapped. I don't like it. Just clean up the lake. Clean it. Literally clean it. Clean the whole park. Work on the fact that the geese and people are, contractors are dumping garbage and sewage and stuff into the lake. I mean, that's become a dumping ground. Deal Lake, how many times in the last, I would say, year have you seen, "Do not fish. Do not touch the water. Do not do anything near this water. Fish taken from these lakes are hazardous to your health." Right? I didn't make it up. Who puts the signs up? You know, who puts them up? The county. These three lakes are a disgrace. You don't need all this accoutrement. Just clean up the lake. But I understand, look, T&amp;M's gotta get some contracts, you gotta get some taxpayer dollars in here that we don't want to spend, but what choice do we have? There's no one here. There's no one here, except the commission who wants it, and you want to turn this into like a tinsel park. Leave it natural. That's one of the most beautiful parks in the state. Clean it up.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion to close public comment?
Some of...
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Is there something that we'd like to add to the motion for approval?
So I...
Sounds like there are a couple of things that people are asking.
It's, if I could surmise, I think there's maybe three or four things that kind of bring it all together. One is, it sounds like that we, as a board, feel that there should be further guidance recommended on material selection and the choice of furniture, including benches, garbage cans, et cetera. Right?
And lighting.
Well, I was gonna have lighting as a separate, but we can include lighting in that. But I would specifically say for lighting that great care is taken to minimize glare with whatever lighting is selected.
Can I, as you're in that thought process?
Sure.
See, I don't know where this would be, if it might be or may not be in the material selection or however this is worded, but again, it might be just the way my brain works. But in the way that the plan is laid out, we have the planning context, which mentions green building and infrastructure techniques, and then recommended improvement strategies, which lays out more specifics. If there's any, because I know in the plan, we're not going to say solar-powered fountains, and that's too specific, but if there's any way just to get language in there, that effort to incorporate sustainable materials or materials with low impact, or something that's...
Renewable.
Yeah, renewable, you know, not that it's gonna happen every time, but that it's in there, not just in the planning context, but in the recommendations. Does that make sense? I don't know if it's too long of a comment.
No. Anything else that we saw?
The other thing I think was mentioned a couple of times was just the, to request to really drive home the need for some creative interpretive signage. I think that that was definitely a recommendation we heard a couple of times.
And, or elements.
Or elements, right. And, yeah, signage and/or physical elements.
Mike, do your comments include uniformity of materials?
Oh, yes. I did write down that are uniform. Yes.
And that should also apply to lighting fixtures.
Agreed.
And...
Just to be kind of picky about the language, I would suggest that it's more unified, not uniform, maybe is the right way to say it. If I were, if I were having to design it, that's what I'd want to hear.
Consistent? Is that?
Unified.
Unified? Okay.
Unified theme.
Unified theme, so that you're not specifying it has to be this throughout, or it has to be connected.
That's right. And it doesn't have to be identical.
Right, right.
The other one I heard that I thought would be nice to put in the document is to encourage the involvement of youth in the community in the signage and maintenance of the park?
And water quality.
And water quality. Yeah. I think those were the three, three big ones. A question about the gateways that came up in some of the public comments, was it proposed to have any kind of structure, or is it just simply?
A suggestion.
Uh-huh. Okay. Yeah, I mean, personally, I like the idea of maybe, maybe a little bit wider paved area kind of at the corners, or, you know, like, kind of like plazas, sort of like mini, not really plaza, but a wider walking path. But I agree, I'm not really a fan of some kind of structure or gateway into the park itself, those.
And I, I feel like it doesn't have to, does not have to be a structure, but I think it could be. Like, I think it can be open. I don't mean literally open, but I say, I'm saying that the concept of gateway doesn't have to be the way it's drawn there, but that you're saying, and I understand what Warner's saying is somewhat different than what I'm saying, but those are, those are gateway. I mean, you're either making it a statement or you're not.
Right.
I would be on the side of making it a statement that that is a gateway, but it doesn't have to be a physical gateway. If that makes, it's not to be columns, but I feel like having gateways, whether it be through interpretive elements, or through landscaping, or through different paving, some element that says, yes, you can enter anywhere in the park, but here you are welcome, you know, that type of...
Sure, sure, sure.
As far as the question of Bond Avenue, Bond Street, rather, and the walkway crossing Bond, rather than having a mechanical light system, you can calm traffic by putting the speed bump 20 foot.
Yeah, I don't, actually, that's what we, that's what we discussed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That it would be a vehicle to slow it down anyway, just by its existence. Just by its presence, it slows things down.
I agree. I wouldn't, I don't think that we need a flashing light system. I think a simple raised crosswalk by itself would suffice, but the legal definition of a mid-block crossing, there has to be an ordinance adopted, and you do need, like, crosswalk signs there, posted there, that says like, "This is a crosswalk." Other than that, I don't think you would need necessarily, like, a flashing beacon.
I did want to talk a little bit more about the fishing. I know, I mean, it's an important topic, it's come up, I mean, public comment came up. It's in here for a reason, because it came up from community input. So I think, I wanted, just wanted to make the comment that a lot of the elements in this plan are designed to address the issue that there's water quality, so that is to improve, so that fisher people can go and enjoy it, whether or not they, you know, do now. But either way, I'm gonna say it again, I think the idea, it's either all-in or not, and I feel like giving the amenities to fish, especially if we have input from fisher people, that really says, this is, we're accommodating you. This is, this is something that you can do. You don't have to do it here, but if you're going to do it, here's the things that you, you know. I kind of feel like it's in or out. It's, either you're kind of deterring it and saying water quality issues, or you're saying, you can come do this. And I definitely see people fishing in Sunset Lake.
All right. Do you have, do you have what you need to be able to add to the, I don't know if it's a resolution, if it's an amendment, or what this would be?
Generally, what I've done in the past with other boards that I've represented is we've just submitted a letter to the counselor committee, or, you know, whatever the type of board is, or whatever the governing body is, to indicate what the comments were from the members of the planning board.
Okay.
Back to them, and they can either accept them or not accept them.
Okay. So you'll, so feel free that if you're going to, when you craft it, that feel free to...
Well, let me just, if I can summarize.
Go ahead.
What I have.
Let's go.
I have six items.
Okay.
All right. Further guidance on materials for furniture and seating. Lighting, take care to minimize glare, to be unified, and to be unified. Use of renewable materials also to be unified. Creative interpretive signage, include the, excuse me, include the youth in designing sites for water quality, wayfaring, and/or feeding wildlife, or not feeding wildlife, I guess I should say. Raised crosswalk without flashing light, but with appropriate signage.
Can I ask, sorry. Well, the interpretive thing, I think that could be combined into one thing. It could be an interpretive program, or interpretive, some other word, but then in parentheses, including these other historical, ecological, and there's another one mentioned. I mean, it can be defined in different ways, but I don't think it has to be, I think it can be under one thing, that's the interpretive element, and then there's categories under that. And the other one was that the renewable and...
Sustainable.
Sustainable.
Materials.
Materials.
Okay. So I can work with Irene if we could?
Yeah, and if you, and you have any concerns, you can certainly, Irene certainly can circulate it here, and we can take a look at it, because it's going to have to come up, actually, this will not have to come back before us to approve, because it's a letter that you're writing as opposed to a resolution.
Correct.
Correct. Okay. We just want to make sure we get it right.
Does it write for your resolution that you have?
Does it have to be a resolution?
We do have to do a resolution.
You have the resolution.
To approve this, I'm just saying, to prove...
Approve this subject to the comments that we're going to provide.
Okay, so a resolution does have to happen outside of just the approval of this. It has to have the letter on top.
Technically, you're not approving it. You're...
Just passing a resolution.
We're passing it.
Pending to your master plan as a, as your special reporter.
And then it should become an amendment to...
To the master plan.
Right. Appendix.
Okay. So, I'm ready to entertain a motion to, to have the Sunset Lake Park master plan be an appendix to the Asbury Park master plan with the conditions that we just spoke about. Can I get a motion for that?
I'll make a motion to do exactly what Barbara just said.
I have a question. Do we do that before we get the written piece back in front of us, and then vote on it?
No.
No?
I don't think so.
Okay. But we will...
Usually, we adopt the resolution after, after the item is approved.
It's kind of, you're gonna memorialize the resolution at the next meeting anyway.
Right.
But you're, you're adopting the resolution, no different than any application that comes before the board tonight.
Okay, so we're approving with those conditions, and then we have to come back with...
The resolution.
You'll come back with it, and then we'll do it just like we do every other thing, like every other resolution. Okay.
So I have a motion by Jennifer Sauter, second by Alexis Taylor, Councilwoman of Alton.
Yes.
Jim Henry.
Yes.
Michael Manzella.
Yes.
Jennifer Sauter.
Yes.
Alexis Taylor.
Yes.
And Barbara Crisett.
Yes. Okay. Do we have anything else on the resolution?
Resolution.
Oh, we have a resolution for 1200 Monroe Avenue, Boys and Girls Club?
Yes.
Does any, does anyone have any comments on that resolution on the board?
No, I think, I think we got all the conditions that were discussed, so...
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
No.
Go ahead.
So, so we have Jim Henry.
Yes.
Michael Manzella.
Yes.
Jennifer Sauter.
Yes.
Alexis Taylor.
Yes.
And I think that's it. Yes. All right. Resolution to memorialize.
Okay. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.